I call to order the Chester Upland School District Board of Directors Committee meeting for January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. May we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, may we have a roll call, please?
Vice President Mr. Green.
President.
Vice President Rudy Giuliani.
President.
Secretary Tara Perry.
Present.
Board Member Ken Washington.
Present.
Board Member Kristina Delta. President. Board Member George Sanders.
Present.
Board Member Becky Mckernan.
Present.
Board Member Beverly Harris.
Present.
And President Julie.
Present.
Thank you.
Well, now I have the report from Mr. Green for the DCIU.
Good evening. I'll be reporting on the Delaware County Intermediate Unit. At our January board meeting, we approved a number of items in contracts. We approved contracts with the District of Havert for Township to provide services for a special education teacher to do coaching at the Havert for Middle School from January two thousand and twenty-three to June of two thousand and twenty-three. The DCI also will provide up to forty hours of student environment, task tools, and framework facilitation to students and IEP teams. We approved contracts with Chester Upland School District, Willimpin School District, Annual Title One, non-public allocations for DCI to provide training, coaching, staffing, and professional development services based on a contract that runs from July one, two thousand and twenty-two, to September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. We also approved contracts with Wallingford-Swalthmore District to provide communication and community relations support that will go from December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two until June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. We approved extended the RCN contract for the lit fiber servicing of eight libraries and exercising the four-for-five one-year extension options that will begin from July one, twenty-three, to June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. We approved a number of grants with approval to receive a reimagined access and mathematically pathway to STEM grant for five hundred thousand dollars coming from the Pennsylvania Department of Education. We approved a grant from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crown of Delinquency, mental health grant the amount of seventy thousand dollars, and a school and safety grant in the amount of seventy thousand dollars. And that is my report for this one.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Green, did anyone have any questions for me?
I do have a question. Can you elaborate on what the RCN extensions are? What the acronym, is that an acronym or?
The, that is extending the RCN. It's a contract that lets fiber servicing that we provide to the different libraries.
Okay. And then you also spoke to a number of grants for a variety of different things. How do the grant fundings impact Chester Upland School District in particular?
Well, the grant funders, they disperse it throughout the county depending on the programs, the districts depending on what program that they're providing service to, to each individual district.
So has Chester Upland School District, to your knowledge, applied for any of those funds in order to either A, continue services that we already offering, or B, enhance services, or C, implement services that weren't previously offered?
To my knowledge, I am not sure. The grant came from the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and so I don't know if we actually apply for any of those grants from the Department of Education, but I would assume we would, but I am not one hundred percent sure.
Okay. Thank you.
So that may be a question for the district to see if they apply for any of the...
I just wanted to make sure we don't miss out.
We have, and we have, we have, we're reaping the benefits of some of the grants. You know, I know most recent grant, there's money providing, they're providing directly to us for some of the social emotional learning, like there was a large amount of money that was awarded. So to Mr. Green's point, what he said was as money is dispersed through the DCIU, it's allocated to the schools throughout the county and utilized for whatever that grant was written for. So, but we've taken advantage of all those grants.
Is it possible that as a part of a future update, we can report out on what monies the district did receive from those grants so that we, you know, that it's transparent how reciprocal the district is able to use those funds to either, again, continue services, implement new services, or maintain services that we're already offering?
Are you saying from, specifically from DCIU, or the grants that are, that comes from the Department of Education or other entities?
So the grants that, that come from other entities that DCI, to my understanding is to make sure that the clarity is there, though the funding comes from other sources, do the applicants, meaning the districts, have to apply to DCIU, or do they apply to whomever the grant was issued from?
So DCIU has the programs already in place, and as they service the individual districts, they use the funding to do that.
To implement.
Right. So then, so then DCIU would have a report on which school districts they gave those funds to.
Correct.
So we would be able to report out on what revenues the districts, Chester Upland School District, received as a result of the grants that were received. That's all I was asking.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, well now hear from a report from a board member Harris, the policy report.
Policy Updates. Committee of a Whole, January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and Receivers' Meeting, January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. The Policy Committee Board Members, President Joe Neal, Board Member and Legislative Vazian Beverly Harris, Executive Sponsor Dr. Latrice Ann Moomen, Assistant Superintendent of Schools. Updates. The Board Policy Committee met on Thursday, January the fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, at twelve-thirty PM with Dr. Parkinson Superintendent of Schools and Dr. Moomen, Assistant Superintendent of Schools. The purpose of the meeting was to review and discuss revisions to the zero-zero local board procedure policies. There are fourteen policies related to board procedures on the meeting agenda. Most did not require revisions upon review. Revisions to Policy zero-zero-six point one, volume two, two thousand and twenty included recommended language for authority in service educational opportunities and required training programs and terms. Please visit our district website under Board Policies to review zero-zero local board procedures and policies in their entirety. The next policy meeting will be held on Thursday, February the second, two thousand and twenty-three, at twelve-thirty PM at thirteen-fifty Edgemont to review Board Policy Revisions seven-hundred property.
Okay, thank you.
That's the end of my report.
Anyone have any questions for, Ms. Harris?
You mentioned that the policies will be available online. Is there a specific location in which, and perhaps Dr. Mo, I can expand on this as well, or Mo can expand on this as well, where interested persons can go and view the application when vacancies make, are, become available? Where on, where on the website is the application?
For, I cannot answer that question.
Can you repeat that, the application for?
For vacancies of what?
Yeah, so the, there was an update to the policy for the form for a vacancy on the board. I just want to know where, where can a person find that on the website?
That wasn't in my...
Those are...
Yeah, it wasn't in her report, but...
That wasn't in my report tonight.
We talked about it in the executive session, so...
Right. I was, but I was just asking if, if we could get that information.
Why do I have to get it? Okay.
Yeah, we can get that information. Dr. Mo, would you want to speak to that now?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
We can edit it, because this isn't...
It's a spin tape.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Board. All of the documents that are under review, those will be uploaded to each of the items on the agenda, and that happens before the actual agenda goes public. So you do have several that are, are new, they're the forms, and what we do as a policy committee is we have, we also attach like a update document to explain each of those items, which will also clarify which ones are new.
Thank you.
So, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? No? Okay. Mr. Washington, Facilities and Transportation, your report?
Good evening. I just wanted to report that the facilities manager and I, Mr. Malvernaro, have been in conversation about areas of the facilities management, and one of the things that is nearest and dearest to him is the staffing. Right now, he has sixteen staff members, but for the, the size of our properties and the equipment that we're responsible for, they probably should have about twenty-one. It's not due to lack of effort that he doesn't have a larger staff, it's just that we put out feelers and job notices, and just not a lot of people that are coming to work in that capacity. So he's doing the best he can with the staff that he has. Also, one of the things that has sort of bothered me for years is that when it comes to preventive maintenance and corrective maintenance, the HVAC here in the high school is still controlled by an outside entity. And I, I shudder to think how we allowed that in our contract. This is going, this goes back from some years, but they still have us overburrowed if something happens to the HVAC here. You know, they can charge us whatever they want. So also, I just asked a question that's probably unusual, but I asked if there's any, have there been any complaints from parents about the material condition of the school district? Because maybe a kid could see something and not say anything to the staff, but report it to their parents, and as of a couple of days ago, none of that had surfaced. I, we also talked about the need for an audit of the school's grounds, material condition, and equipment, and that's been worked by Mr. Malvernaro. And that's the end of my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, I have a question. You said that your lack of staffing with the workers that we need, is that because we're not paying enough, or what seems to be the problem?
I haven't seen a, a report or an, or a, an exit document about what happens when we interview people, but we're trying, we're, we're putting the needs out there. It's just that you have people that don't qualify, that may, you know, may want to work here, but by the time it goes through the background investigation, things of that nature, can kind of thins out the candidates.
Did you speak on what, I'm sorry, Dan.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Did you speak on specific, what are the specific areas? I think I missed it, that you were talking about, we were in need of, that we were missing.
Oh, I was, I was saying that I thought that we should have a, a ready audit, because what an audit does when it comes to facilities is you have an idea of the type of equipment, changes and updates and repairs you're going to have in the future. So an audit, a good audit would give you about a five-year picture of the type of money you're going to have to spend to keep the facilities up and running.
Gotcha. I have a question. You spoke to something that I thought was very, very important, and I wanted to know if there was an internal and external form for employees and employees, students, and families to report facilities issues that they see?
That I would have to pass to the facilities manager.
Good evening to all. What was the question again, that you mentioned, as far as there's a form?
Yes, so the question was if there was an internal and external document where employees, students, families can report facilities issues that they may see. So for instance, Mr. Washington spoke to, you know, if there were any issues that parents they have observed, right? I was just asking if there was a form where, let's just say, one, parent A didn't see it, but parent B saw that there was a mouse on the trap that wasn't removed, or something like that, like, or if there was a internal issue where the vent wasn't working in one room, but is working in another room? Just are, are we tracking maintenance issues via form to say how many we receive on a monthly basis, weekly basis, where, where we stand with closing those out because we've already completed them? Just trying, trying to get some clarity behind how we're tracking our existing problems and any future problems that we may have.
Well, basically, what we have now is an actual link on our Chester Upland, it's called Facility, no, back buildings, repairs at ChesterUplandSD.org, and there they can report any...
That's an email address.
Correct. And it goes to everybody that's related to facilities, and it specifically comes to me. And that way, I can actually schedule accordingly, based obviously on priority to actually be completed. And that's basically how we accomplish, we can track, we can see everything that way.
I, I ask that question because it ties into just looking at the scope of equipment and the lifespan of it. You know, for instance, if the HVAC system, we know, we've talked about that, and when we're looking at allocating funds for specific buildings that need repairs, we can say we had X amount of calls about this for the years. We really need to get on top of that, and it just show that true transparency to our community that we are tracking these things, and we know how many, you know, reports we've got on that. So I do, thank you for sharing that with us, and of course, making sure that our community is aware...
Yes.
...of via emails that go out to the families, as well as on our website, that if you see something, this is how you report it.
Correct. That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I will be reporting on the IT Committee for Ms. Dela Phillips. Staff had begun to move into thirteen-fifty, and IT is tasked with setting up their computer workstations, printers, and telephones. This is a coordinated effort with maintenance because they are bringing the equipment over to the new building. When everyone has settled, IT will come back to do some wire management. ESA printers, two printers were taken to ESA to replace the printers that Widener will be removing. IT has set up the two printers and instructed staff on their use. A cheat sheet will be created and placed near the printers for the end users. A video will also be sent to assist the staff. SSIDs and passwords, SSIDs, I'm told, means basically network names and passwords. There has been a need to clean up the SSIDs, Wi-Fi designations, and the corresponding passwords. The IT staff narrowed the list to just the following, and each has a specific purpose. CUSD IT, CUSD staff, CUSD student, C, CUSD Chromebooks. Scripts have been created to force the students' devices onto the CUSD Chromebook SSID to prevent them from going to the guest network. ESSER inventory. We have received equipment that was ordered via ESSER funds. Currently, the equipment is being inventoried and will be entered into the Asset Keeper software. That is the IT report. Do you guys have any questions? Okay, now I will be reporting on the Human Resources. The Department of Human Resources had a successful hiring event on January fourth for the district's support vacancies. Over thirty individuals showed up, and several were promising candidates. We are hopeful that these individuals will join the district and support the overall success and welfare of our students. As of today, the district has seven actual in-classroom teaching vacancies and four anticipated in-classroom teaching vacancies. By school, the current vacancies are STEM Academy, one, Chester High School, two, and one anticipated, Toby Farms, one, Cusa, one anticipated, Main Street, two, Edgemont Scholars Academy, one, and two anticipated. The district would like to acknowledge and express our thanks to Mrs., I don't know how to say her name, March Amagazi and Mrs. Mahoney, who will both be retiring from the district in February. Mrs. March Amagazi has served the district for over fifteen years, and Mrs. Mahoney has served the district for over twenty-five years. We sincerely appreciate the dedication to the success of our students. We wish them a happy retirement and wish them well in their future endeavors. We absolutely do. All right, any questions for me?
I have a question regarding the anticipated individuals. Do we know, I, I guess, how long are we anticipating? If, if that makes, if that's clear?
Dr. Pliss, could you elaborate on that?
Good evening.
So the actual vacancies mean that there is no one in the classroom. Like, we're either, we're either utilizing Kelly Services, or those are, our class coverages will come into play because there is not a teacher of record or like a long-term sub identified. The anticipated vacancies, like for example, Mrs. March Amagazi, she is retiring, so we know it's coming up, but if we're able, she, but she's still physically here, so it's anticipated that it'll be a vacancy if we're not able to fill it before her last day. So if we're able to fill it, then it's not a vacancy because there is no, there's no gap in an actual teacher being in the classroom. So like, when Mrs. Mahoney retires, right now, she's still there, so it's not an actual vacancy now, but it will be if we don't fill the position before she leaves. So we calculate, like, so most, most, so under, through PDE, professionals are required to give us a sixty-day notice before they leave the district. So most of the time when that occurs, we still have an employee in the position for those sixty days, so it's not technically a vacancy. So we're still trying to, we're recruiting for that position, so then in the event, like, we get a teacher who's able to come in, let's say, two weeks earlier, they do like a co-teaching method, sometimes there's like a transition of the workload so that it's a smooth transition, which is what we hope for, but in the event that that does not happen on their last day of separation, the position becomes like an actual teaching vacancy, which means like, you know, we have to go to Kelly Services, let them know, like, you even need a day-to-day sub, that's kind of where that comes into play.
And do you know yet, because it seemed like almost for every one that there was a vacancy, there was two anticipated, from what I recall, hearing, just around about how, what that, what that window looks like? Because if we have to start reaching out, like...
So we already do. So once they give us the notice, we post a position.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so once they give us their notice, we post a position, but I like to differentiate between the two, because like, if you see like sixteen, you're like, people may say like, a sixteen teachers out, there is an issue, but technically, they're still within our notice period, so they're there, but we do want the, you, the board, as well as the public, to know that if we're unable to fill the position, there is an anticipated vacancy coming. But, you know, we're hopeful that we'll be able to fill those vacancies, so.
Thank you, Dr. Pliss.
May I, may I?
Yes.
For years, our math department has been suffering from bake, long-term vacancies. How are we now?
So what I believe that the, the biggest hit is to, was to our middle schools. So I know that when I came in, in my previous role, and now in this role, like Toby Farms and I have a math teacher, from what I understand, that had been for years. So we were able to successfully fill those vacancies where we realized a greater need. So for instance, at Chester High School, those vacancies happen once the school year started, so it's a little bit more difficult to recruit once the school year starts. So we have been creative in trying to figure out what we can do with our current staff. So like, with our ninth graders, there was an influx of ninth-grade students who registered after the start of the school year, which is hard to staff because we don't know how many teachers we need if our students don't register before the start of the school year. So once we had that situation, we condensed the ninth-grade class, and we put a teacher of record, a co-teacher, and a teacher assistant in there to support that classroom because of those types of issues. So we are still working on that. All of our positions have been posted for the upcoming school year. So for elementary, middle school, high school, as well as our content areas, we have already posted them, but for this school year, we have tried to be creative in that, but still trying to get ahead of our recruiting efforts. All of those positions have been posted as of January, so as we get candidates in now, we're telling them that these positions are for the next school year.
Thank you.
I have a question while you're there. The creating positions.
Yes.
Is that moving people around, or are there actually new creations, new positions created, and the funding is available?
So those would be newly created positions that were not budgeted for at the start of the school year, nor is there funds that we could reallocate. However, through the conversations, these are positions that have been determined as needs for the district to move forward successfully, so that is why they have been presented.
I, I have a question. You said that you created these positions without money already appropriated for?
So any, if, if the money is not already in the budget, we have to create it to put it into the budget. So right now, as of July, when the budget passed, these positions, they, they were not there. So in order to put it into the budget, we have to put it before the, the board and the receiver to do so.
Yeah, so these positions are positions that are being filled tomorrow, next week, but they have to be added so that we can vote on them to, to be approved for the budget. So let's say that one of the examples was an IT director, which is something the district needs to function, you need an IT director. So if this receiver approves that position, then it'll be put in the budget for the upcoming school year.
Yeah, okay. So then, what you're saying, for the rest of the year, we'll go without that?
Well, we do have, we have a company we're using right now, we're outsourcing it, but we believe that we can save money by creating this in-house, as opposed to outsourcing IT, and I'm just using that as an example.
But that's not S's money, is it?
No, no. No, we talked about that, no.
So that should have been twenty-three, twenty-four school year, as opposed to twenty-two, twenty-three?
No, so what, what happens is because we are paying a company right now, so there's money that we're utilizing with this third, this company we were outsourcing it with. If we can find someone in-house, that money that we are using, that's outsourced, could be repurposed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Dr. Pliss, I don't have a, a question, I just want to thank you and your team for all the improvement efforts that you guys have been doing. I did stop here at the hiring meeting, and I just want to say job well done. I know there's a teacher shortage and staff shortage all over the country, but you guys continue to do those efforts and try to get as much staff as we can here to fill those positions. So job well done, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now we're on to the finance, Mr. Rowley, but before Mr. Rowley takes over, on our agenda, we have consideration for approval of the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four real estate tax index. We will be tabling that tonight, and we will, you know, come back to that in the future. So, Mr. Rowley?
Yes. I want to have a report tonight, too, if you look around, you'll see Ms. Mosley is not here. On our annual scheduled meeting, she's out sick. On our annual scheduled meeting, she's out sick, and I wish her well. Tonight, in our executive meeting, I did bring up some things that are concerning the future budget and some other things that the state has suggested to us. It went well and I hope that we'll put it into practice toward the course of the coming fiscal year. That's my report.
Thank you. All right, now we have the curriculum. From Ms. Quail?
Good evening. I have several items to be, ten items to report on tonight. The first one is in regards to the Clipper Cafe. The district is seeking approval of the state, from the State Board of Health, to allow the Clipper Cafe to be open to the public weekly. The cost for the license or permission is five hundred dollars and that can be paid from the Perkins Grant. So hopefully, near future, I'll have more information on the opening of the cafe to the public. My second is that the district will be seeking approval for, for the replacement of the three-phase air compressors for the automotive shop. The cost of this, anticipated cost is five thousand dollars and this will be funded also through the Perkins Grant. My third thing is, the district will be seeking approval for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year calendar. If and when it is approved by the receiver, opening day will be scheduled for Tuesday, September 5th of twenty-twenty-three, which is the day after Labor Day. So already, we're talking about next school year. Fourth thing I have is that doctor, approval is being seeked for Dr. Parker and Kelly D'Alletto, I hope I said that correctly, to attend an ASCD virtual workshop. Naturally, I wanted to know, what is that? This is a professional, developed, the purpose of the workshop will be professional development in regards to literacy for black students. The cost is two hundred and fifty dollars for the two of them and the budget source that this will come from will be titled to. My fifth thing is approval for Sheena Hudnell, does it say Hudell? And Kimberly Kalachuk to attend the twenty-twenty-three Annual Pre-K Counts Conference. That is on March 8th and 9th. The cost of that is two thousand dollars and the budget source is coming from the pre-k counts budget. Next will be approval for Dr. Parkinson and Dr. Rumeen to attend the National Conference on Education by AASA, which is the School Superintendent's Association. Oh, I'm sorry, I neglected for a cost on that. I'll get back to the committee on that. Next is approval to amend the November 2nd of twenty-twenty-two, which was on A5's agenda item, I reported in November about Navion Solutions. The amount has to be increased to twenty thousand so that it includes Edgemont Scholars Academy. And this is something that I reported on and this is for college and career readiness, which is state mandated. Number eight is the approval to purchase additional scholastic education libraries for Toby Farms. The cost of this is, I can't be right.
Seven thousand, I think.
Seven hundred? I'm sorry, I might have written my notes wrong. The cost, I will, I will correct that in a minute. And the budget source is SRR3. And SRR3 funds are available until twenty-twenty-four, so they don't come out of that. Number nine is the approval of field trips. Some of the trips that the district's taking are to St. Joe's University, Temple University, Westchester University, the Franklin Institute, the Chester Senior Center for the Cosmetology Department to, uh, uh, visit there, the Delaware Children's Museum and Adventure Aquarium. The total cost for all these is about five thousand dollars and the budget source is SRR3. And my last is that Chester High School will be doing their college excursion tour. Remember, STEM has already done theirs. Chester High's is February 20th through the 24th. Cost of this is forty thousand dollars and this is from SRR's money that was set aside when I reported on STEM's going on the college tour. They are going to be, they're not going as far south as STEM did, but that, once some of the schools they will be visiting are Virginia Union University, Howard University, and Coppin University. And thankfully, my partner's here telling me that when I talked about the approval for Dr. Parkinson and Dr. Rumeen to attend the National Conference, the cost is six thousand two hundred dollars from the general fund. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Quail. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Quail?
I have. I have a question. I think you mentioned that a, a travel company is responsible for the college trip. Have we used them before?
They have used college. Chester High, in the past, has used companies to
arrange.
Lead or arrange their college tours. As to whether or not they're using the company they're using this time, that I don't have, I'm not ready to.
I guess I'm just concerned because of the issues that we've had with travel for high school kids.
I can say this to you, that there, some of these things sort of took place ahead of time for this year, but that next year, there'll be a different look, different, there's discussion about different ways to do the college tours with both schools, so that-
What does, what does those college tours, what do they generally average out to, what do they?
It depends on how far they go and where they go, so each company could be different. In particular, for this one, it's forty thousand.
And then they get donations as well?
Well-
To the students?
I don't know that Chester High is asking for people to donate the way STEM did. Oh, I, I didn't get it, S-A-R. This company that Chester High chooses to use has a schedule and I guess they've already signed a contract, so there's no change in this for this year. But for next year, there's going to be some very different conversation about what college tours look like and requirements.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the funding sources for some of the extracurricular activities. Considering the SRR dollars are not long-term dollars, has the department started looking at revenue sources to cover the continuation of tours and extracurricular activities moving forward?
Once, once again, the college tours for next year are going to be looked at differently for the district. As far as the things that I reported on for SRR funds, these are not things that will continue from year to year. It's library books. We wouldn't be buying them the following year. Is that, does that answer your question?
I believe there were some extracurricular activities, including-
You mean field trips?
Yes.
Yes.
That's a good question.
Okay.
Of which I don't have an answer at this point.
No worries. And then, I know that you also alluded to this, but just getting clarity on the acronym for ASCD Virtual Workshop.
I might have to refer to you, Dr. Sutton.
Association for Supervision and Curriculum?
Something with curriculum, yes.
It is, that's Curriculum Director, I want to say, Association Supervisor, Curriculum Developer.
Developer.
That's a good one.
I, I, I'm just, you know, just wanted to know, thank you so much.
Oh, I do know that it has to do with literacy and particularly for black children.
Oh, say it again.
Association for Supervision and Curriculum. And I, was it me?
Development?
Please let me say publicly that when Dr. Sutton and I met in committee, he did share that with me, but when I took notes, I just probably didn't get it down. Okay.
Any more questions?
Director Quail?
Yes.
If, I'm not sure if you're the person to address this to. How was the after-school program?
I have no report on that.
What's the question?
After-school program?
Oh, great question.
Population, up, down, sideways?
I would say elementary, middle schools, the population is great. The high school level is pretty low. But I actually did a walkthrough of the after-school programs this afternoon. They look pretty solid, so. Great academic things going on and some other enrichment activities, so. But the high school level with Chester High, it's struggling.
STEM?
STEM is fine.
And I think oftentimes, in the past few years, I can say this, we've always had a problem with the after-school and the high school level. And for several reasons, some children work after school, you know. We've always had a problem with attendance with that. They have people go if they don't want to. Unfortunately.
And Dr. Sutton, this, you might have to come back. I, I did have a question about the after-school services and who they are available. So for instance, who they're available to. So for instance, I know that some charter members, charter school students can participate in Chester Upland School District's sports activities.
Yes.
Do other schools that operate in Chester Upland School District, private schools, are they able to take advantage of the after-school programs or is it only for students enrolled in Chester Upland School District?
I think any student that lives within Chester Upland boundaries are available.
Is that so?
I believe that's-
Yeah, if their institution doesn't have that sport or that extracurricular activity, like if we have a marching band and the other school doesn't have a marching band.
This is news to me. I don't know how many others of the, the board members are enlightened by that, but I was not aware of that. I was aware that I would see charter school students participating in Chester High athletics and I was like, okay. But I did not know that that was available to any child who lives within the boundaries of Chester Upland School District. Thank you so much for sharing that.
You're welcome.
I have, just as a follow-up.
You said one word, Ms. Sutton.
I know, I'm sorry. Tonight, I'm just full of questions. Just as a follow-up, for parents, naming myself, is it based, are there any restrictions in terms of which one they participate in? So for instance, is it like, so how students are filled it into schools? Typically, is the school closest to their neighborhood? Would the after-school work the same way or is it?
Yeah, I think it would work the same way and it depends on which level. So if we're talking about elementary students, we definitely would want that student to participate in the active school activity that's closest to wherever you live. But high school, we only really have one. If you're talking about athletics, you only have Chester High really.
I'll follow up with you for a feature.
Those students, as you say, that lives within the bounds of our school district, is it up to the parents to get them there or do we supply transportation for them once they register?
I believe it's up to the parent. I would have to do more research on that, Mr. Rowley.
It's the parents.
It's the parents. Okay, that concludes my report. Thank you, back to Ms. Quail. Now, last but certainly not least.
Chairman McLaren, People's Services?
Good evening. I want to first report on our attendance. We have, the average attendance is eighty-one point seven, eighty-one, yeah, point zero seven percent, which is a slight increase. And our enrollment is three thousand one hundred and five. So for People's Services, they're creating a working group for, of internal and external stakeholders to define the supports and services necessary to increase the number of students returning from out-of-school placement. There's a concern for those students who are not in our school district, but we're paying for them to be somewhere else. They're creating a, a group to find out, define the supports and the services necessary to bring those students back. This group will meet bi-weekly, starting the last weekend of January. More information is forthcoming as we prepare for next school year. Department of Education Pennsylvania has been supportive in the process. Currently, we are examining programming, scheduling, levels of support, types of services, and other needs for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year. They're also, they've been successful in meeting the requirements for translation services available to Chester Upland School District students and families during the special education process. The process, also for the process of permission to evaluate and permissions to reevaluate an adherence to the timeline for the services. So those things are taken off the list for corrective action. The district will also continue to receive professional development and training for our autistic support students from the DCIU. Along with that, they will have their next round of trauma attuned training for regular and special registration teachers. They will continue to address professional development and training needs based on staff feedback, administrative observations, and walkthroughs in school visits, which Dr. Sutton just shared with us happens. And that concludes my report, unless someone has questions?
Director McLaren? What is the, if, if you have the information, what is our district truancy like between now, between September and now?
So you want a comparison? I would not be able to give that to you right at this moment. And I'm not sure if, Dr., you can?
I can't at the moment, we can absolutely leave that information for you.
She can, I know she has it. I guess she's on it.
Thank you.
I did have a question about the translation services, but you noted that it was going to be pulled. But I just, in light of the things that are happening around us in our world right now and, you know, the bustloads of refugees being brought into Philadelphia, I'm always thinking about folks ending up here in Chester and us making sure that we have those services available, especially with translation, because we're getting a heavy Hispanic population. But, you know, you, you mentioned that it was pulled from the agenda, so I hope that, I, I believe that was what you said, correct?
That there was what?
It was pulled from the agenda?
No, it is actually, it was a corrective action issue.
Yes.
But we have met the requirements, so we do have-
Oh, okay.
Services.
I misinterpreted that. Okay, so we do have the services.
We do.
Awesome, awesome.
Something that Dr. Wilson has been working on since his arrival.
And with those services, are they also available to any student living within the bounds of Chester Upland School District or is that just specific to students enrolled in our schools?
I believe it's specific to students enrolled in our school.
And most of those institutions-
Have they?
Have someone who supports them, you know, with that, with translations. I'm, you know, specific to that, Dr. Wilson, are you aware of, for a student who's at a charter school, that charter school usually takes care of their own translation needs?
Yes.
Yes, that's right.
Is that charter and private or just-
Yeah, I mean, the private has their, someone translates, takes care of their translation needs as well. Yeah.
I'm just glad we, I'm glad, whatever the issues were, that they resolved because, again, we will probably be seeing an influx of, of more students enrolling and there's, you know, that, that barrier between the Spanish and English, that gap can, can widen really quick if we're not on top of it. So I'm just glad to hear that we, we have that resolved, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions? All right, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'm willing to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Anybody opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, young lady.